Tuesday, December 8. Work session meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. And Madam Chair, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Mrs. Lucasford.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Semis.
Here.
Mayor.
Here. In accordance with Governor Ross's declaration of the state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus, his executive order number 51, which he signed on March the 12th, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council. And due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, which is continuing throughout our country, our Commonwealth and our region and the city of Portsmouth. This work session of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference today, the eighth day of December, without a forum present in the city council chamber. We're doing this in order to reduce the likely spread of the COVID-19 virus. This is in accordance with City Council orders 2020 dash 21 and 2020 dash 102. Each city councilman is participating from their home or some other remote location. And I'm in the city council chamber. With that, we'll start our agenda. And our first is the CAFR report. Mr. Pace.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, good evening. Tonight, we will have a presentation on the comprehensive annual report. Mr. Luke Reynolds and Ms. Laura Harden of the accounting firm of Cherry Becker will give the auditor's report for the city's comprehensive annual financial report.
Ms. Reynolds, you have the floor.
Sorry, I did not unmute myself. Hi, I'm Laura Harden. I'm the audit director on this engagement. Thank you so much for having us here this evening to present the preliminary results of the audit of the city of Portsmouth for June 30, 2020. If you could go ahead and move forward one slide. So we do have just a few things that we're going to go over today. What we were engaged to provide to y'all, the audit results, as well as some required communications. Can move forward two slides. One more, please. Thank you. So we were engaged to provide an audit of the financial statements, which includes the city, the school board, the Economic Development Authority, the Port and Industrial Commission, as well as the Student Activity Funds for the school division. This audit is a very long process, as finance is very aware, and probably a lot of you are as well. We do start our fieldwork in the summer. So we began around June of 2020. And then we continue on and do our final fieldwork in the fall. We are anticipating that we will be issuing the report during the month of December. We are hoping that we will issue by the end of next week. Next slide, please. In addition to this, we also provide an audit of the city's major federal programs as required by Uniform Grant Guidance. You might have more commonly heard this referred to as the single audit. In addition to that, since we are in the Commonwealth of Virginia, we do also provide an audit of the city's compliance with laws and regulations under the Auditor of Public Accounts specifications for audits of cities, counties, and towns as required by the Commonwealth of Virginia's Auditor of Public Accounts, as well as provide an audit of compliance with laws and regulations under government auditing standards. In addition to these things, we do issue a few other reports. The first being a comparative report transmittal form in accordance with the requirements of the Uniform Financial Reporting Manual, which we anticipate issuing this month as well. We also provide a Sheriff's Office Internal Control over Compliance with the Virginia Sheriff's Accounting Manual, which we have previously issued. And an examination report for the Virginia Retirement System Census Data, which we have also previously issued. And then lastly, we provide a financial assurance test in accordance with requirements of the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, which we are anticipating issuing this month as well. Next, two slides forward, please. So just some of our preliminary reports. We are anticipating that our opinion on the 2020 financial statements will be unmodified, which is the best opinion that you can receive as a result of your audit. We are anticipating having one material weakness in internal control over financial reporting related to the accounts payable, as well as one significant deficiency in internal control over financial reporting related to the CIP. In addition, we have noted one material weakness in internal control over compliance with, in regards to the Virginia compliance requirements related to the Walden Cooper Report, as well as we anticipate one significant deficiency in internal control over compliance requirements. And then one instance of noncompliance with Uniform Guidance related to the Community Development Block Grant. Then, in addition to that, we do have four instances that we have identified noncompliance with Virginia compliance requirements. The first related to the statement of economic interest forms, then social services IT access forms, access, child welfare trust accounting, and then the Walden Cooper Report. And all of these items will be included in the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs in the issued single audit report. You can go forward two more slides. Thank you. So for the year 2020, there were no changes in accounting policies. So what that means is that if you compared this year's CAFR to last year's CAFR, the policies used in preparing both of them would remain unchanged. And so things should look fairly similarly laid out. During the year, the GASB did issue Statement Number 95, which the city did implement. This standard delayed the implementation of most standards by 12 months, with the exception of the LEAST standard, which was delayed by 18 months. Next, in the city's financial statement, there are some items in the statements that are considered to be estimates. So this means that those numbers are subject to change based on the underlying data and inputs that go into those numbers. The first being the allowance for doubtful accounts for receivables. In addition, there are some actuarially computed liabilities, most specifically related to your OPEB and pension plans, and then lastly, depreciation expense. We are anticipating that there will be some uncorrected misstatements that we will be reporting related to both CIP and payables. And we are also anticipating that there are going to be some material audit adjustments related to public utility, CIP expenditures, and payables. Upon the completion of the audit, we will issue a separate report that will lay out what these adjustments and uncorrected misstatements are. Next slide, please. I am happy to report we did not have any disagreements with management during our audit process. We also had no difficulties that we encountered in being able to perform the audit. We aren't aware of any consultations that the city has had with other accountants. Next slide. At the conclusion of our audit, we will provide a representation letter to be signed. Basically, this letter will say that the city has provided us access to the necessary information to perform our audit procedures. We are also independent of the city. This means that you've received an unbiased opinion. In the financial statements, there's the management's discussion and analysis and other required supplementary information, which we have applied limited procedures to, meaning that we have agreed that information to the audited financial statements. However, we do not provide an opinion on those statements. And then we also applied certain additional procedures to other supplementary information and have in relation to opinion on those. And then last slide, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, ma'am. I now open the floor up for members of council to ask their questions. And I recognize Vice Mayor Lisa Lukasberg. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Laura, one question about the GASB number 95 we extended for one year. Will there be any action required in next year to move on that or to get that back in alignment with the regular accounting principles?
So that standard just delayed the implementation of future standards. Most notably, this year, GASB Statement Number 84 for fiduciary activities would have been required to be implemented, but because of the COVID-19 pandemic, that standard was delayed. And then the LEAST standard, which would have been required to be implemented next year, has been essentially delayed until, I think, 2022. And just gives governments that already have very tight constraints on being able to put that into place, a little bit of extra time to get those put together and address all the implementation aspects of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, sir. The chair recognizes Councilman Paul Battle. Sir, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. I noticed that you were saying quite a few items were delinquent or behind or what have you. Is this normal?
Are you referring to the compliance findings?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, so they're just items that we've identified as a part of our audit procedure where the city did not meet that compliance requirement for a particular reason. So as a part of our audit reporting, you will see what we found as a result of our testing, as well as the underlying cause and management's response to those findings on what their plans are for rectifying those situations. So it's similar to, nothing, some of them are similar to findings that have been reported in the previous year?
Yes, ma'am. And so will your report also indicate who's responsible and who should be handling those situations?
Yes, so city finance will put together what is called a corrective action plan that's required to be submitted, along with their data collection form. And as a part of the corrective action plan, they will include who that responsible individual is for those corrective actions.
So how does our corrective action plan look? At this point, how would it be standing? Is it good? Is it fair? Is it, you guys are ahead of, or you guys are lagging behind? I mean, what would the plan thus for say about the fiters? Management, financial management?
If you don't mind, if you allow me to interject.
Let me recognize you. This is our Director of Finance. And you want to speak to the question that Councilman Battle has raised, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, I'm talking to the auditor.
Okay.
And I'm sure, if she's the auditor, that she can answer the question on where we are and why we are there, but the shortcomings of what she's seen at this time.
Yes, that's very good. Let's let the auditor answer the question.
Okay. Well, we are still in the process of determining all of the underlying causes of the various findings that will be issued. I know that some of them are most likely due to the staff turnover that has happened. Or a lot of the times with the Social Services Department, we've just seen, for those findings, we do see statewide that there is a lack of resources. So for for within those departments, for them to get all of the compliance requirements done on a timely basis.
But how does this?
And in regards to, so I know last year, we had both issues with the CIP as well as the payables. And those particular findings are less substantial than they were last year. CIP, there was a material weakness. So, I mean, over the years, the city finance department has been working very hard to get a good grasp on the CIP analysis, as well as put in good procedures for the payables. Does that help to answer your question? I'm not sure if I'm addressing what.
Well, what I'm looking for is your analysis, not a critiquing of our standings in reference to handling our finances, not reasons why. At this point, just the standing. How does it look? How does it look to the auditors in New York that handle the credit rating?
Well, all that information, I mean, so as a part of the audit, we do put together what's called a Schedule of Findings and Question Costs. And this lists out all of the findings which will be reported. In addition, if there are any other internal control matters that don't rise to either being a noncompliance finding with laws and regulations or a significant deficiency or material weakness in internal controls, we would be issuing a separate management letter. So far, throughout our audit process, I mean, we are a good chunk of the way through, but I mean, there's still a little bit to be done. But I'm not anticipating that we'll be issuing a separate management letter, just what will be issued within that audit report of findings.
So you came in, you did the audit to this point? So are you saying, my God, there's a lot of work to be done? Or are you saying, well, they're not that far behind? Or are you saying, oh, this is great. They look good. What are you saying at this point?
I am saying it's kind of a hard, I mean, I'm not sure I can give you the answer you want. I mean, I think that, you know, Mimi is working, Mimi and the entire finance department is working very hard to put good procedures in place and making really great strides to strengthen the department based on our interactions with her.
I understand that she is new, and anything that's projected at this point is not of her doing. I understand that all of the things that you just said. But I'm just asking, where are we in reference to what you have done? Are we behind? Are we ahead? Are we, I know that this is not Mimi's.
Well, as as far as the audit timeline, we are ahead compared to last year. I mean, we issued last year's CAFR in March, and we are issuing just, I mean, we're hopeful that maybe we can hit the 15th deadline, but if not, we're going to be just a few days behind. So I think that it's in a good position to being more compliant with the laws and regulations than it has been as far as timeliness of the CAFR submission in the previous year.
And then all of this will be reflected in your report?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Other members of council questions? Let me take care of that first. All right. I do have a question. Go to your slide number nine. At the bottom of the page, the audit adjustments and uncorrected misstatements. Can you elaborate on the two bullet points in that particular section of the slide?
Yes, so as a result of prior year's audits with having issues with both CIP and payables, these are high-risk audit areas for us, so we perform a lot of additional testing over these. I don't have access to the slides to be able to share those with you. I have them. I just am not able to share my particular screen. So when we are talking about payables, we perform a procedure, which is called a search for unrecorded liabilities, where we look at expenditures that have happened subsequent to year end to determine whether they were for expenses incurred within fiscal year 2020 and should have been accrued back into the 2020 financial statements. As a result of that audit, we have identified items that we can, where we say material audit adjustments, these are things that we calculate a materiality of what we think is going to be material to the financial statements. And so for these material items, these are things that are over that threshold that we are going to require, or, you know, or Mimi will be making that adjustment to the financial statements to accrue for those. And then where we have these uncorrected misstatements, these are things that we have what we call a clearly immaterial threshold, and then we have that material threshold, things that fall between that, where it's not going to make a material difference to the financial statement. So management will have decided to pass on accruing for those items. But these items are still in process of being tested. So these are what we're anticipating is going to happen, but there could be changes on whether or not there are going to be uncorrected misstatements. We are still in the process of working that out.
And if I heard you correctly, you think that you can finish by the 15th of December? Is that correct?
We are, I mean, that's a high-level hope, but we still do have a lot to get through. So, I mean, we're shooting for the 18th at the latest. If we can meet the 15th, that's what we would love to do, but we can't, based on the work that we still have left to do, we can't guarantee that it will happen by the 15th.
Okay. Any other questions from members of council? The chair recognizes our Director of Finance, our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Terry.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I just wanted to kind of, just not a whole lot, just to kind of give a overview, a quick overview. Thank you so much, Laura. Her team has been amazing in assisting us in making sure that we get our CAFR done as quickly and as possible, but timely, but correctly. The statements that she's actually identified as being, having adjustments, I just wanted to remind council that this report comes out every year, and it identifies the same internal controls within the financial statements, along with the additional report. I also want just to remind council, this is just not a finance situation. This is across all of the departments in which they audit. So how we prepare financial statements, how we review our processes, they actually go out to the different divisions within the city and review their processes to ensure that they are in compliance with state code, as well as ensuring that we follow all of our GASB codes and ensuring that we get our financial statements corrected or correct. So I just didn't want anyone to think it was a finance report. This CAFR is a city financial report, which crosses and covers all departments and all funds within the city. I'm very excited that we are even getting this close. Our deadline is December 15th. And what we are trying to do is get that done as quickly as possible with the internal control audit as well. The 18th would be spectacular. Of course, we are pushing for the 15th, but they have worked weekends, holidays. During the week, they've also been on site to help and push the city across the finish line. And I want to just thank you and commend you for that as well. And I just didn't want anybody to think that we were slacking, because that is not what we're doing here. We're working very hard, very diligent. I think last year, I'm not, I don't want to quote how many material weaknesses we had, but when I look, I know we had more than five. So when I look at what we have now compared to last year, I'm very excited. I just started in March of 2020, so I had one quarter to get this stuff done and a lot of reporting to catch up. So with that, I commend my staff for their hard work and dedication in ensuring that this gets done. So I want to make the council proud, but I also want to make sure that we stay in line with our reporting requirements and do what's right as far as what is expected from the Department of Finance.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Battle, you're asking for the floor. You have the floor, sir.
Let me assure you, Ms. Mimi, that I am not trying to indicate anything about your, you just arriving, anything that's dealing with the city. I'm sure you're trying to put it in place. So it's not about who's done who wrong. What I'm interested in, with everything that she's said, evidently, there are some places where folk are not aware of what their obligations are. And my interest is only to send out to those folk what their obligations are. It seems as if the person that was in your position did all of the work for the complete city and didn't dictate down to those folks responsible at certain points to help make us as strong as we could be made. So that's all I'm interested in here. Everybody knowing what their job and what their responsibility is in reference to this financial CAFR. That's all it's about. I know you just got here. I know you're not, last year, you weren't responsible for any of, I know that. I know you're quite capable, but I'm not, I'm not interested in this. So the betting, all I want to do is go straight to what the problems are.
And I
The folk knowing exactly what their responsibility is.
And I do appreciate that. And I just wanted to commend our interim city manager, because anytime that I have an issue with getting what I am needing for the auditors and any request, he ensures that I get it. And so I want to thank him, because that has helped speed up our process. We have a 24-hour turnaround that I put in place for any information that the auditors have requested from any departments. And that has made a huge difference in ensuring that the auditors get the information they need. And again, I just want to make sure that, we want to make the city proud. We want to make sure that we do our jobs. We want to make sure that we are on time with our financial report. I wanted Ms. Harden to just, when she did identify, there's four or five audits that occur that I didn't even think city council was aware of. The annual financial report is just one of the many that are due and have deadlines, along with the sheriff compliance audit. We have several VRS compliance. There are several that I didn't know if you all were aware. And that's why I asked her to incorporate that in her presentation. And the final audit, or the final, the CAFR is the final annual report. But there's also an additional report that is required to go to the state after we've completed our audit. So we're on it.
Councilman Battle?
But even though we aren't aware, because we don't get involved in the city's situation, the most important thing is for those folk who are responsible to be aware. If they're aware, we're going to be the best that we can be. And that's all I'm interested in, making, I'll say that the best that we can be. All of the rest of it, throw it out of the window for me.
What?
Any other questions from members of council? Mr. Pace, anything to add? Wait a minute. We do have a question, and that's Councilman Glover. Sir, you have the floor.
Well, Mayor, thank you. First of all, I just want to congratulate Ms. Terry and her team, and certainly our interim city manager, for your professionalism and your hard work. I mean, this has been a tough year for the whole team. And I know there's been folks working under some real And I know there's been folks working under some really dire circumstances. And so I just want to encourage you all and let you know that we appreciate all the efforts and we look forward to continuing to be informed and made up to date and watch you guys do good work in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Pace?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, just want to add to the sentiments of everyone else with regard to a positive message relative to trying to get the CAFR done. I can tell you that Ms. Terry and her team has been here probably.
We've lost your, you went mute. Yeah.
Trying to make sure that everything was done in a timely manner to make sure that we are able to meet our deadlines. One of my goals was to try to get this CAFR done. And I think that one of the goals when Ms. Terry was hired was to make sure that we get it done closer to the timeline when it was supposed to be done. She has done a yeoman's job in terms of making sure that departments receive information, that she gets the information back from them in terms of participating in all of the audits. So I just want to say we're trying and hopefully with everything that we have, we can still make either the 15th or the 18th deadline to ensure that the CAFR is completed closer to the timeline that we should have it.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments, any other questions? Thank you. Before we move on to our next item, I want to remind everybody, particularly the public, that this is being streamed live on Facebook Live and will be available for viewing at the normal places that this city posts such videos. And again, thank you to Cherry Buckard for the work that you're doing and Ms. Terry. All right, let's go to item number two, and that's the CARES Act funding update. Mr. Pace?
Yes, Mayor, members of Vice of Council, Vice Mayor. Ms. Terry will provide a financial report back relative to CARES Act funding.
Good evening, everybody. So next slide, please. I just wanted to give you a brief update before we move into our five-year forecast of where we stand in the CARES Act funding. The CARES Act funding deadline is December 30th, 31st, 2020. CARES Act funds received to date have been 16.47 million. The CARES Act funds expended to date have been 14.77 million. CARES Act fund expenditures obligated 1.7 million, which pretty much we have everything in place to meet our goal and deadline of December 30th, December 31st deadline, and no funds will be returned to the state. Next slide. Any questions?
I'll open up the floor for questions from any member of council on the CARES Act funding briefing. I don't see any questions. Thank you, ma'am. Please continue to do a good job on taking care of these special funds. I know you will. Our next item is the five-year forecast. Mr. Pace?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Mr. Trey Burke, City Important Budget Officer, will provide the city's five-year forecast presentation.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and members of City Council, good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting the preliminary summation of the five-year forecast. Before I go on, can everyone hear me okay?
You're good.
Yes.
The Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, recommends that governments at all levels forecast major revenues and expenditures and national credit rating agencies consider multi-year financial planning as a best practice for highly rated local governments. Long-term financial planning is the process of aligning financial capacity with long-term service objectives. It will serve as a link between departments and city management. This conservative forecast should not be confused with the budget. It is a planning tool to help management prepare for the future. Slide. Several methodologies were used to formulate the forecast. For revenues, we use time series analysis, which involves comparisons of the same items, such as monthly sales revenue, over a significantly long period to detect general patterns of a relationship between associated factors or variables and projects the direction of future revenue performance. Staff also analyzed trends and variables that affect revenues and sought input from from departments responsible for generating revenues. For expenditures, staff analyzed historical expenditure trends and operating accounts, sought guidance from human resources and VRS regarding health, retirement, and life insurance, and applied projections of the Consumer Price Index, which measures the changes in prices paid by urban consumers for representative basket of goods and services. Slide. Before we share the five-year forecast, it is important to look back at FY 2020. Real estate tax serves as the largest revenue source in the city and has experienced a modest recovery, growing at an annual rate of 0.72% with VIG and 0.35% without VIG from FY 10 to FY 20. Actual revenue missed the budget by 0.4%. Personal property taxes, including machinery and tools, rose 9.8% above last year, but grew at an annual rate of 1.07% since FY 2010. Other local taxes, which consist of sales and use tax, restaurant food tax, cigarette tax, admissions tax, and lodging tax, among others, decreased by 4.6% from FY 19. From FY 10 through FY 20, these have grown at a modest annual rate of 0.8%. Slide. Revenues are forecast to decrease in FY 2022. Limiting growth factors include real estate because of uncertainty of commercial property. Forecast assumes a 1% decrease in real estate assessments. The real estate assessor currently indicates that no change represents the most optimistic scenario. Residential properties are appreciating, but commercial, which comprises about 30% of the total, could drop between 5 and 10%. The General Assembly's post-COVID budget reductions beyond originally adopted budget impacted constitutional reimbursements. The General Assembly redirected recordation tax to transportation. Cumulatively, all of these represent a $1.6 million reduction. Positive revenue, excuse me, positive revenue adjustments include general sales. The Supreme Court decision in South Dakota versus Wayfair eliminated the physical presence requirement for online retailers to remit taxes, meaning that the lack of a physical presence in the state no longer freed sellers from collecting and remitting taxes. Virginia adopted post-South Dakota v. Wayfair tax reporting policies in July 2019, significantly improving tax reporting compliance for all categories of internet sales. The use of fund balance oscillates over the forecast period, matching planned use in the CIP. The forecast continues the use of fund balance for OPEB. Slide. I will highlight the following key expenditure assumptions. Salaries, we do not project any any increase for salaries for FY 22. It does assume a 2% increase in FY 23 and FY 2025 every other year. Blue Chip Financial projects a 2.3% increase in the Consumer Price Index. General operating, excuse me, general operating expenditures are based on historical trends and the Consumer Price Index. Internal services are also based on historical trends. The CIP follows the FY 2021 through FY 2025 CIP and carries over the 2025 estimate to 2026. Debt service reflects current debt issuances through June 30, 2020, and projected debt issuance of 20.5 million in FY 2023 and 20 million in FY 2025. However, limiting debt issuances will affect the completion of CIP projects. Slide. This slide shows a forecast of significant deficits throughout the forecast period, starting at 11.4 million in FY 22 and rising as high as 14 million in FY 2025. Revenues are projected to grow at an annual rate of 0.4%, while expenditures are projected to grow at a rate of 1.1%. Our revenue growth remains quite modest and department directors will once again be asked to review their spending while tightening their belts and closely monitoring their budgets. Slide. This slide provides context of the fiscal stress under which Portsmouth operates. The lowest real estate tax revenue per penny and lowest total local sales per capita highlights this. Adding to our fiscal stress, we lead the region in tax-exempt property, such as military bases or state facilities, and dependent population, individuals below 18 and over 65. This places demand on schools, health-related services, EMS, and tax exemption programs, but does not contribute significantly to the economy/tax base. Although we impose the highest real estate and personal property tax rate in the region in the context of income and home values, our real estate taxes as a percentage of income is the second lowest among the urban peers. Slide. At this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll now open the floor up for questions. Any questions? All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Pace, that completes a five-year forecast tonight?
It does.
Do you have any other comments or things to discuss with council?
Yes, Mayor, do. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, just want to bring your attention to one of the CMRs that will appear on the agenda tonight, the adoption of resolution that authorizes execution of a corporation agreement with the Economic Development Authority regarding the marketing and development of the saved properties, Two Harbor, Three Harbor Court, Three Harbor Court, and also Two Parkway, and further authorizing the conveyance of the saved properties to the EDA. This conveyance is consistent with this and previous councils' objective to make the EDA the city's development organization, and conveyance of these properties accomplishes this goal. Thank you.
And just to be clear for the public, that is the property of the Vista Center, the Old Portside Parcel, and the parking garage that's associated with what everybody calls the Holiday Insight. Is that correct? You're muted. Yeah. And so you're reminding us that this accomplishes the goal that we this council gave the city manager twofold. One is to get this property in the hands of the EDA and make the EDA the city's chief economic development agency. Is that correct?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other items for the work session? Here and done, we will close out the work session. We have a regular session that begins at 7:00 PM. I now adjourn the work session. Thank you.